Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the May 1st, 2017 Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Here.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Jordan, please.
Gracious God, I find that He is now the become to. Thank you for you just being who you are. Thank you for your grace, your mercy. Thank you for your love and kindness. We thank you for the entire city of Waukegan. We thank you for this present administration. Thank you for all the things and the visions and the goals that you have allowed to be achieved for the past four years. The presence of this change of God, Master. We pray now that you would lead, guide, keep, cover, lead like only you can. We continue to give your name the glory, honor, and the praise. In the name above all names is where we pray. At heart say, "Amen."
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Jordan. Under Mayor's comments, I'd like to mention the passing of Audrey Nixon. Audrey, whom many of you know was a great woman, an inspiration to many in our community, and I can assure you that Audrey will be sorely missed by myself and several other members of our community. The next minutes. Item A, motion to approve the executive session minutes of April 6, 2017. Motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman May. All's in favor?
Aye.
Item number two, B, motion to approve the record minutes of April 17, 2017. Motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Villalobos. All's in favor?
Aye.
There are no resolutions, proclamation, presentation, or appointments. Waukegan Main Street, please. Art, are you here? Anyone from Main Street?
Mecca.
Please move to the microphone.
To me, yes. To me, she's coming. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and audience. On behalf of Waukegan Main Street, my name is Toomey Jones. I'm the board president. And we just want to say thank you to Mayor Motley, his administration, and the council members for their support throughout your term here. We really appreciate your support through everything that we are doing to revitalize downtown in the lakefront. We also appreciate you allowing us this forum to address the council each and every month. So, thank you so much. And also, we'd like to say that we're looking forward to working with Mayor Let Cunningham and working forward with his administration. And thank you all.
Thank you. Next is the Public Safety. Alderman Newsome, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Safety met this evening. We had one item on the agenda. Motion to authorize a proper city official to pay the 2017-2018 Northeastern Illinois Regional Crime Lab membership assessment fee of $121,759. This payment will be made from line item 100608524436 in ISOMO.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. Roll call, please. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, old business. Motion by, motion to authorize a proper city official to reject all bids and rebid the certain contract for City Hall, Public Works, and Police Department. This was held over by Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Cunningham, do you want to continue with that, or would you like to make a motion to accept? You held it over.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking to table it, Your Honor.
Okay, tabled by Alderman Cunningham. Next item is to accept the letter of intent to purchase certain city-owned property, real estate, and authorize proper city officials to execute a letter of intent. Enlisting agreement held over by Alderman Seager. Is there anyone else who would like to hold it over?
Yes, sir. Table it.
Okay, tabled by Alderman...
Seager.
No, you had, someone other than you, Alderman.
I'll table it.
Tabled, tabled by Alderman Moiseo. Okay. Next is, I'd like our current city clerk, Maria Lacour, to address the audience. Many of you don't know, but Maria accomplished something that no other city clerk in this city has accomplished, and she got a master's certificate as a certified municipal clerk in the state of Illinois. It took her nine years to obtain that. Maria, I'd like you to make...
Thank you. It's been my honor and privilege to serve the citizens of Waukegan for 27 years. I have enjoyed all my experience with the city, particularly my 17-year service as deputy clerk, and the last three years as your city clerk. I sincerely hope that I have many more opportunities to serve Waukegan citizens in the future. I'd like to congratulate Mayor Cunningham, Clerk Kilkelly, and Treasurer Schwab in wish luck and success. I'd like to thank my staff, the very best there is, for all of your hard work and striving for excellence every single day without fail. I'd like to thank Mayor Motley for your confidence in me. I'd like to thank the Aldermen for your partnership. I'd like to thank the residents of Waukegan for allowing me to serve you. Most of all, I would like to thank my amazing family for their constant love and support. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Well, they say that all good things come to an end, and obviously, there's been a change in administration, and I'd like to make some comments. It is hard for me to believe that 42 years ago, I stood before the city council, raised my hand, and was sworn in as a young, naive, Waukegan police officer. And by my side was the gentleman to my right, Steve Martin. It's only fitting that we came in together and were leaving together. And Steve, thank you so much for what you've done for me personally and what you've done for this city. I personally appreciate that from the bottom of my heart. Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to thank the Aldermen and the staff of the city for their dedication and commitment to this administration and the citizens of our community. I am very proud of what we accomplished in four years. It was my honor and my privilege to serve as your mayor for the past four years. Sam Cunningham, congratulations to you, sir. I wish you well and know that you will serve the best interests of our community, and God bless you, sir.
Thank you, Steve. Proud of you, Mr. Cunningham.
Officer Fring. Take care. I'll take the gavel too, so I get to warn it.
I think my daughter, yesterday, sent me a text message, and she said, "Dad, glad to have you back."
Take care, Wayne.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. Thank you all, and hopefully, these city council meetings can look like this every time. Thank you.
Can I get everyone's attention, please? Can I get everyone's attention, please? Can you find your seats? We're going to start the next portion of our meeting. We're going to have a swearing-in of our new city clerk.
Who are you going to be to hold the Bible there?
Larry Kilbane.
All right, come on up. Step over here so that the audience can see you. They don't want to see me. If you would hold the Bible so that it'll be bright of yours, and if you would raise your right hand to be sworn.
I. I. Janet E. Kilkelly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
City clerk.
City clerk.
For the city of Waukegan.
For the city of Waukegan.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Amen.
While we're waiting, I'd like to announce my family. So, with me, 91, my wife, Sue Goodwood Schwab. Stand up, please. My son, Bobby the Dave Schwab. My daughter, Cindy Schwab Joy. Her husband, Gary Joy. My little son-in-law, their child, Lexi Schwab. My favorite daughter, Beth Schwab. Right here. My best friend, there at Comedy Center, Miss Hisher. And I can't thank you enough, the Deputy Treasurer, Treasurer Joan Westfall. She's been with me two years, and it seems like it's been forever. Thank you, Joan, for everything you've done. And...
Okay, Joan, I'm going to call this meeting to order. If I'm going to make a mistake, it's in front of family and friends. So, roll call?
Yes.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Everyone's present and accounted for? I think you're on, Joan.
Swearing out of Treasurer Schwab.
I.
I, Dr. John Schwab.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
For affirm that I will.
For affirm that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Treasurer for the city of Waukegan.
Of Treasurer for the city of Waukegan.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Chief Judge George Ortiz, and it is my honor to be here on this historic occasion as Sam Cunningham assumes the mayoralty. Judging by the, by the number of people here today, I think it's safe to say that democracy is alive and well in Waukegan, and all of us here are grateful for this great exercise in our democracy as we witness an orderly and peaceful transition from one administration to another. At this time, I am going to ask Mr. Cunningham to place his left hand on the Bible and to raise his right hand and repeat after me. "I, Sam Cunningham..."
"I, Sam Cunningham."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"I will support the Constitution of the United States."
"...and the Constitution of the state of Illinois..."
"...and the Constitution of the state of Illinois."
"...and that I will faithfully discharge..."
"...and I will faithfully discharge."
"...the duties of the office of..."
"...the duties of the office of..."
"...mayor for the city of Waukegan..."
"...mayor for the city of Waukegan."
"...to the best of my ability..."
"...to the best of my ability."
"...so help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Testing. The meeting is coming to order. The meeting is coming to order.
I'm not getting much.
Have to be quiet so I can come to order!
Is it like this experience?
God, Bob, how do you do it? Where's your gavel?
I guess I gotta get a gavel. Bob Long, could you please take your seat, please? We're going to ask Bob Long, our new corporation counsel, to... Everyone, what we're going to do right now, before we start, we're going to take a traditional council photo. It'll be right in front, so Alderman, can we come right to the front? Let's take the council photo, and please, that'll be the only photo that's going to be taken at this time. Thank you. Alderman.
Yes.
In front.
Treasurer.
One, two, three. One more time. One, two, three. Thank you.
Before I start my official duties, I have a prayer that I'd like to start off with, and then, very brief remarks. Let us pray. Our Father, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Father, thank you for blessing me with your cert to be your servant and the newly-elected leader of our fair city, Waukegan. Please bless our administrators and the transition teams as, together with conviction and full resolve, we will be worthy servants for the people. Father, thank you for the foundation of public service led by my predecessors, presiding city councils, and this city council with who we would endeavor to find collaboration versus division to best serve the citizens of Waukegan. Father, I ask for wisdom and your divine guidance to steadfastly lead in good times as well as bad. Continue to grant me the strength needed to challenge those who would act to prevent our city from being all it can be. Guide me to be a leader that the citizens of Waukegan can be proud of. I pray for our military personnel and their families, whose sacrifice in the name of democracy cannot be measured. I pray for our first responders who courageously and unselfishly serve and protect our community each and every day. I pray for all those who educate and shape the minds and spirits of tomorrow's leaders. I pray for our parents, that they may rear their children in the nurture of the Lord. I pray for and thank my family, immediate and extended. I pray and thank my pastor, Pastor Jordan, and the Greater Faith Church and all the faithful. In Jesus' name, I ask that you hear my prayer and let the people of God say, "Amen." Now, let's be clear. I'm not a preacher, I'm a politician. Just a brief remarks. Alderman Kirk Kilkelly, Treasurer Schwab, city staff, friends, neighbors, thank you for being here this evening. Allow me to begin by recognizing Mayor Wayne Motley and his years of service to our city as the mayor and city clerk, but also as a Waukegan police officer. Wayne, we wish you, your family, all the best in your future endeavors. This evening, I've had the honor of taking the oath of office to serve as Waukegan's mayor for the next four years. I am the 40th mayor to take this oath, and the magnitude of the responsibility with this office is not lost on me. I want to begin by acknowledging that the residents of Waukegan, one day short of four weeks ago, placed their faith and trust in my ability to move our city forward. I thank you. I assure you that your trust has not been misplaced. To my daughters, Sierra, Samantha, you are my inspiration. To my mother, Mary Ross Cunningham, you are my rock. My brothers and sisters probably would say different, but you're there too. I love you all, and know, I will make you proud. I've been asked countless times, what will the next four years bring? In front of us are many challenges as well as many opportunities. Some we have foreseen and others yet to be. This being said, I offer two words to express my goals for the next four years: progress and unity. First, we will become stronger stewards of taxpayers' dollars by placing efficiency and transparency front and center with every single policy decision. We will be transparent always, remembering the public's interests and trust are precious and must never be compromised. We must... We must be and will be accessible. I will look not to just now, but to the future. No more Band-Aid solutions. We will invest in infrastructure that will meet our needs today and serve us for years to come. Our economic development efforts will be directed to transforming our city as business-friendly, while also recognizing and acknowledging the needs of our current business community. Business, business retention is a priority. Friends, these are just a few of our challenges and opportunities. We cannot accomplish what is needed if we are not unified. Much has been made about my candidacy being historic because I am Waukegan's first African-American mayor. I understand, respect, and appreciate the history, but I prefer to see myself as a resident of Waukegan, Illinois. Roads. Roads, jobs, business opportunities, equity, efficiency, and transparency in government services are what we all want. Truly, what unites us in Waukegan is our diversity. We are all stakeholders in our city's future. Every voice is important, every voice is relevant. Our challenges seem less when we stand together for progress. Our opportunities are greater if we are united. Progress and unity, the promise of what Waukegan can be is right in front of us. Now, let's make it a reality. Thank you, God bless city of Waukegan. Now, everybody was standing. And my aunt, my Aunt Jimmy. It's been a long road to see her stand on her own. It is a blessing, thank you. It just caught my eye that she stood up by herself. Ladies and gentlemen, about five, six years ago, we didn't think that would be, that would happen. Glory be to God. You look beautiful, Aunt Jimmy. Alright, yeah. I, that's, that's, that's impromptu, I had to say that. Alright. Now, what everybody has been, has elected me for, new business. Approval of regular payroll dated April 28, 2017, in amount of $1,462,015.53. Motion by...
Mayor?
Yes?
Sorry to interrupt, but, uh, I moved to seat Alderman Tempest.
Oh, that's right. Motion by Alderman Villanova, second by Alderman Newsom, to seat Alderman Larry Tempest. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. I'll repeat, approval of regular payroll dated April 28, 2017, in the amount of $1,462,015.53. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Valco. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's been passed and carried. Item number B, approval of final payout dated April 28, 2017, in amount of $1,132.82. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Seeger. Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's been passed and carried. Item C, approval of bills dated April 28, 2017, in amount of $1,309,575,000. Correction, $1,309,575.46. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Taylor. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's been passed and carried. Item, item D, approval of all block parties. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Seeger. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Approval of all raffle sales. Motion by Alderman Mozio, second by Alderman Villa, Villa Lobos. Any questions? Roll call, or?
Roll.
All those approve?
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Alderman F, I'm, Alderman F. Item, item F. Approve the use of Steina Pavilion for a Motown on the lake on Saturday, June 24, 2017, from 7:00 PM to 11, 11:30 PM. This event is sponsored by, sponsored by Gen G Inc. The sponsor has applied under the director, directive for non-city government use, non-city built, non, not, city-owned buildings and venues, and has paid all costs required by that directive. The event has been approved by the Outdoor Special Events Board. Motion by Alderman Villa Lobos, second by Alderman Newsom. Any questions?
Mayor, question.
Alderman, Alderman...
Alcohol?
Uh, will there be alcohol? There will be, I think there's gonna be a, there's gonna be an application for that. Yes, sir.
Beer and wine, or total?
Is George here?
I don't know if this is good or bad.
Um, yes, there will be alcohol, and there'll be applying for the non-for-profit organization, um, license, which is four times a year.
Doing this four times a year?
Uh, for this particular event, just once, and they have three other events they could do down the road, not necessarily at the lakefront, they could do wherever they, they feel fit, fit, four times a year.
Alright, but my question, is there gonna be alcohol, or just beer and wine?
Beer and wine.
Okay, that's what my question was. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions to the motion?
Mayor?
Alderman Seeger.
George, uh, who? Do we supply the security for the lakefront?
Um, no, they'll be responsible for all the expenses, security, and cleaning the, the beach and, and everything.
Okay.
Now, please...
Well, clean it up, then.
Yes, police department might require security, and I believe, in this particular case, they will require two police officers, just because there'll be alcohol out there. And they will pay for that.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Seeger.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Villa Lobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Motion's been passed and carried. Item G, city council committee appointments. So there's no, no committee. Item G, city council committee appointments, at this time, there are no committee appointments. On item H, mayor's appointments. Okay, we can, we can move. At this time, there are no mayor appointments. Ordinances and resolutions. Audience time. But I don't think we have any ordinance and resolutions, I didn't see any out there. Audience time.
Derek Wal, Walker? Derek Walker?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Come over here. I can't read, I gotta read it.
Come on, you only got three minutes now. There he is, right behind you.
Alderman Cunningham, on behalf of Black, um, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind, we present you with this rare black and green flag as the first black mayor of the city of Waukegan.
Turn around, turn around, gentlemen. Uh-oh, turn around, this way. Look at me. There we go.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, big man. Appreciate it.
Stay down for a second.
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, you can come in and say...
Mr. Blanks?
Okay. Mayor Cunningham, we do respect the fact that you are the mayor of all the citizens of Waukegan, and that in fact, that you are a citizen of Waukegan. But we brought you here today, we brought this for you today because we do understand and respect the fact also, that raising our young youth to respect, or have self-respect, value and self-pride, you today standing as example of what we've been teaching our young people in this community. And I want you to know, that becoming a leader, I also understand, that great leaders have went on, those that have went on to become great people, learn what it means to put self to the side, and do what is in the best interest of the good of the whole. So on behalf of Black Abolition Movement for the Mind, I wanna let you know, that we're in the first ward, and we're here to support you in the best interest of all the citizens, and definitely what we can do in the first ward. Thank you, sir.
Randy Sobeki?
Hello, Randy Sobeki, 1640 Whitney, Waukegan, Illinois. I'd like to introduce myself, I'm Randy Sobeki, the PTO president at Little Fort Elementary School here in Waukegan. On Monday, May 8th, which is next Monday, Little Fort Juarez Middle School will be hosting world-famous Harlem Wizards, uh, to town to take on, uh, community members, administration, teachers, and students here in Waukegan. It's gonna be a fundraiser event to, uh, support the schools and the Little Fort Elementary, to purchase new playground equipment for K through 2nd at Little Fort. It's still the original equipment since 1957, when the school was built. So we're, we're trying to raise the funds to replace this school equipment for the little ones. Uh, we'd like to invite everybody here, out. Next Monday, ticket sales, uh, you can purchase tickets at Juarez Middle School, both high schools, in the, uh, bookstores, Little Fort Elementary, or you can also purchase them online, uh, harlemwizards.com, and then just go to the menu button down to schedule, to May 8th, and it'll bring you right to the link. Tickets in advance are $10 for students, $12 general admission, and at the door, it is $12 students, uh, 15 general admission. Um, I do have flyers, I'll put them in the back if anyone's interested. You can also, um, check out the video. We have a video on YouTube, uh, it announces, lists all the players at the end of the video, it's, uh, harlemwizards/waukegan, uh, on YouTube, and some of the key players that will be playing in the game. Mayor Cunningham will be playing. We'll check out his ball skills. Alderman May will be playing. Superintendent Placencia will be playing.
Uh-oh.
Chief of Staff Nick Ella-Jackis will be playing. Deputy Chief Police Chief Keith Zupak will be playing. Our boys' basketball varsity players, uh, they had a great season this year, uh, come out and support them. They'll be playing during the third quarter, 'cause they like to be competitive, so we'll let them play them during the third quarter.
I ain't playing against cops.
And we'll wish them a farewell at their last game at the Dog Pound. And the game will be, uh, doors open at 5:30, game's at 6:30, and it'll be here at the, uh, Washington Campus, main gym.
Will the tickets at the door?
Uh, yeah, tickets at the door. That's it. Thank you.
Margaret Carrasco. Margaret Carrasco.
Margaret Carrasco, um, today, May 1st, 2017, commemorates a new administration for the city of Waukegan. Accept my warmest congratulations on your victory, and my best wishes for your success as you prepare to take up those responsibilities and challenges as mayor of Waukegan. Your vision, your platform, Sam, resonated with the majority of Waukegan residents. We, the citizens of Waukegan, are now joined and united with you to the effort to rebuild our town, with changes, changes starting right here and right now. Because this moment is your moment, it belongs to you, this is your day, this is your celebration, and this is now your town, the city of Waukegan. But many of us remember back not too long ago, when our factories left us shuttered, left our town, and left thousands of our Waukegan residents without jobs, left behind. But that is the past, and we are now looking only to the future. We will start winning again, winning like never before. We will bring back those jobs to Waukegan, we will bring back our wealth, and we will bring back our dreams. And talking about dreams, your former teacher, my dad, sent a message for you, Sam. Um, it from the Padilla family, immigrant Mexican family that worked in the fields until they were hired, all of them, to work at Abbott Laboratories, and would invest their entire check in stock with Abbott's, for the past 100 years, waiting for that special moment to give back to the community, waiting for that special person that they knew, their dream, would make their dream come true. The message said that Sam is the person. And I don't know if people know this, but they got, I, I'm told that they got a Gojos, Waukegan residents got a Gojos up in heaven, okay? And they all get together, and they've been planning and getting investors and getting all their pennies ready. So, my dad said to tell you, they're ready now. We have companies, investors, uh, my personal project, which you know a little bit about, we wanna invest $10 million into a new media company, Nationwide TV, Radio, the biggest movie production company, First Chicago's ready to come to Waukegan. Oh, he also said, PS, happy birthday, Larry Tempest, his colleague in high school, okay? God bless you, Sam, and Waukegan is ready, thank you.
Esther Herron? Esther Herron?
My name, my name is Esther Herron. I am a Venezuelan architect with almost 20 years of experience developing projects. Also have a specialty in hospitality business administration. I am a Waukegan resident. Also, I am the founder of the Foreign Professionals Coalition in order to bring awareness about the situation and problems confronted by educated immigrants. I was inspired after receiving some letters from President Barack Obama. For documented immigrants, it's difficult to be inserted in the American workforce, even more for professionals and higher skilled immigrants who struggle to practice the career they are studying in their countries. I would like to show you these charts. That is a 2016 research that shows the billion, no million, billion of dollars the United States has foregone in tax revenue because of this situation. And the links for this research are in the Foreign Professionals Coalition website that I would like you to visit and I would like you to support it. Sadly, Waukegan is no an exception to this situation. Despite of having almost 22% of minorities, mostly immigrants, but they have not been acknowledged by city officials who didn't respond to their needs with appropriate solutions and even didn't embrace their multicultural attributes. The diversity of Waukegan is underrepresented in public positions. I would like to see an open hiring process for filling these positions based on merits and qualifications at diverse levels. The hiring minorities would bring to Waukegan a kaleidoscope of opinion to set goal and obtain executable results for a successful urban development. That Waukegan would be a skyrocket at a prominent position in the state of Illinois. Congratulations, Mr. Cunningham. Waukegan residents demand and expect changes in order to have an inclusive community. I wish you success in your term that would contribute to your legacy to the city of Waukegan. Thank you, Mr. Manley, for your time and your service. And to all of you, I appreciate your consideration, thank you.
Is that it Jenny? Jenny?
That's it, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Are we gonna start with Alderman's time?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like, uh, I lost a dear friend and she served our county, our city and our country. Mrs. Audrey Nixon. My condolences to the home, the whole family, from the Seager family, from all of us. She was a great lady. And I loved her very much and a dear friend. I thank you.
Well, congratulations, Mayor Cunningham. Me and Sam go back a long time, went to high school together, played in a few teams together. He knows that I will work with him to try to, I liked his words of progress and unity. I like those two words. But I just want to give him a little bit of advice because sometime in that seat, you can't always see things. And let's not forget communication, Mayor Cunningham. Because you, you've always been a champion about making sure that we get the communication in a timely fashion. And I just wanted to keep you, remind you of that because sometimes sitting in that seat, my God, with everything you got to do, you sometimes forget, you forget things and things of that. Progress, unity, and I'd like to add communication on my part. And I have no doubt that we'll continue to move things forward. Congratulations.
First, I'd like to start off by saying thank you for everyone for being here today. This is an historical moment in the city of Waukegan. And to see so many faces here present and support this moment is a it's a great thing that touches me, my heart and gives me more optimism about our city going forward. So thank you so much for being here. But I have a lot to say, for those who don't know me, I say a lot. First, I'd like to mention, thank yous to the Wasniaks for coordinating the Amstet's cleanup. From my understanding, I got about 25 volunteers to clean up the Amstets on Earth Day this past Saturday. Also, there was another Earth Day cleanup on the Waukegans Harbor. That one actually was coordinated with the Waukegan Port District, myself, Alderman Valco, a couple of the business owners there on the lakefront, Dox like Dogs, X Nobel, who else was part of that? Basically, the businesses there on the lakefront. We were able to get over 100 volunteers to participate in this event. And actually, we weighed the amount of trash that we picked up off the harbor going from the south break wall, south of the port district, all the way to the beach and the duno space. And we picked up 1,751 pounds of trash. So that was removed from our lakefront this past Earth Day. Also, I had the great pleasure of participating in the People's Climate March in Chicago this past Saturday. Though the weather wasn't quite cooperative, it was a great turnout, it was rather positive energy, and again, this is to work towards keeping, make sure that our environment is safe and secured. I myself am a local legislator, right? But our county, state, federal, have to make sure that we keep climate in mind and our environment safe. So that was a great opportunity for me. Also, that same Saturday, I came back to Waukegan and we had two new businesses open up in the fourth ward in downtown Waukegan. We had a Capheim Art Studio opened up at 122 Washington Street. It's a great space, if you're a fan of the arts, participate in art walks and also check out the Capheim Art Studios right on Washington. The second one was for the Cuban Experience Cigar Lounge. This was a great turnout, the Cuban Experience had been open for a little bit of time, but they had a ribbon cutting on Saturday and the pace was packed. It was great to see so many people come in and enjoying the environment there, they had amazing food also, so that was great. So I wanted to give a shout out to those individuals and to their businesses and wish them best of luck. Upcoming events. We have the Cinco de Mayo event at the harbors, at the lakefront harbor on May 5th from 6:30 to 11:30 PM. Saturday, May 6th from 1 PM to 11:30 PM. Sunday, May 7th from noon to 9 PM. This is a great event put on by Greater Waukegan Development Coalition. If you ever had opportunity to go to see these events, it's amazing to see how many people actually come down. The last event they had was for the Fiesta in September and over the weekend they got about 30,000 people to come in attendance. So this is the start off, kickoff for that series of events they have, so they'll have one every month and they're thematic. So this will be the first one for Cinco de Mayo. Yeah, alright. Also, there will be a recycling event at the Waukegan Public Library. Also, this upcoming Sunday, or sorry, this upcoming Saturday from 1 PM to 4 PM. The Waukegan Public Library in the parking lot behind the, where the garage is at, they'll be accepting electronic devices. So if you got any electronics, anything that's like kind of old outdated, old computers, old printers, laptops, TVs, anything of that nature, bring it to the Waukegan Public Library on Saturday between 1 and 4 PM and they'll just take it off your hands. Also, they'll do paper shredding as well, so if you have like a bulk of paper that you want to get rid of, it's a great opportunity for that. On a personal note, I've been partnering with the Waukegan Rotary Club coming up this upcoming Saturday as well from 10:30 to noon to do a trash pickup along the McChlorie Bike Path. And we'll be, we'll be meeting at the Washington Street entrance right there on Washington, right behind Booner's Bar. And so we'll be partnering with Rotary, so if anybody's interested in doing some cleanup with me that Saturday, we'll be doing that from 10:30 AM to noon. This will be the first one. Also, this upcoming Sunday from 11 AM to 2 PM in partnership with a young student, this is what amazes me about Waukegan. This young man, Austin Cantu, he's a freshman in high school, at Waukegan High School. And he took it upon himself to make sure that the art park in downtown Waukegan on Genesee Street is a space that's welcoming and inviting to residents. So it's taken upon himself and his family to make sure there's a beautification of this art park. I'm supporting him with my efforts and trying to bring volunteers to come along. So if anybody's interested in helping out with that cause, that's on Sunday from 11 AM to 2 PM. And it's just south of Washington Street. This, right next between, by the, just between Reyes Grocery Store and the Washington, Waukegan building there. And then, last but not least, congratulations to John, Janet and Sam. I look forward to working with you for the next two years. And I think we can make this a very dynamic community, I'm very hopeful, optimistic right now. So congratulations again, thank you.
Thank you, Honor. Last month, the city council approved honorary street naming for Ms. Edith Smith. And I would like to read a description that was on the application written by her grandson. To give you a little history about Ms. Smith. Edith was a champion for civil rights and liberties. She was a member of several groups, Protect All Right, the Urban League in which the Black Conference of Education, BCOE, was created and a board member of the Southside Y MCA. In 1966, a boycott was formed to begin on the first day of school, of the school year at Whittier Elementary. Reverend H.J. Cook allowed classes to be held at Gideon Missionary Baptist Church. Later on, she, Marvin Smith, Reverend Cook and two others filed a class action suit as the, as the Illinois Supreme Court handed down their decision to integrate Waukegan Public Schools. This led to her being elected to the Waukegan Township High School Board, District 119 in 1968. She and several others were very instrumental in the hiring of several black teachers such as Olin Arrington, Frank and Catherine Walker, Marvin Arrington, Marlot and Martha Williams, James and Ann Walker and Eva Ladette. In April of 1972, she became an employee of Waukegan Public School, District 60. She worked as a paraprofessional and insecurity until her retirement in June 1997. I would like to announce that on Saturday, May 13th at 1 PM, there will be an unveiling of an honorary sign dedicated to Ms. Edith Smith. And Glen Flora from Lewis Avenue to Jackson will be named after Ms. Edith Smith. Everyone is invited to come out at 1 PM, Saturday, May 13th to the Glen Flora and Lewis, the Plaza Parking Lot. And the other thing I have is congratulations to City Clerk Kelly Treasure Schwab and to our new mayor, Mayor Cunningham. I'm proud of you. I'm so happy for you. I'm looking forward to working with you. You as mayor and not just as Alderman to Alderman. I was happy to hear your prayer that you let off before you gave your comments and asking God to give you wisdom and direction on how to lead this city. And just know that I'll be praying the same thing for you. And I know he's gonna honor your prayer because you asked. He's gonna honor your prayer. With that said, congratulations again.
Well, to look at Sam in the mayor's seat. I remember him as a student. I remember him as an athlete at high school. I remember as an Alderman, the leader in the council for the first ward. And now, I've got a few little notes here I don't forget. As a person that was somehow will know he'll bring the city together. I think he'll bring us together to a new dimension in the city of Waukegan. He's done a great job in the city council and he'll continue to do a greater job. Of course, with mom's help too, you know, forget Mary. God bless her, you know, that's my dear friend. Sam, I do remember you as a student too. What a good student, what a great athlete. Should have been a wrestler, but he liked that basketball too much. I could have made you a good wrestler too, Sam, I really could have, you gave me a chance. Well, I know Sam is a person that will never give up. How many times did you try for this job? Uno, dos, tres, cuatro. Correct? Never give up, that's one thing I taught my athletes, you never give up, you continue the battle. And by God, you did it, and thank God for the city that you did it. What else did I write down? Well, I believe Sam will move our city to a new level too that we never had before. I sincerely believe that. I really kind of believe that by divine guidance, that Sam's here for a reason. I really believe that. To bring this city together in a new dimension we've never been before, to move it forward. And I really believe that sincerely, Sam, and you know I'm on your team, that's for sure. I find it a pleasure to consider myself part of your team. And I'm so proud of you, Sam, I really am so proud that to see Sam there sitting in the mayor's chair. Well, thank you, Jesus, thank you.
Okay. So I too want to congratulate Mayor Sam Cunningham on this historic evening. While we have spent the last several months as opponents, it is time for us to set aside our partisan differences and work together towards our common goal for the betterment of our beloved city. Our rigorous and spirited campaigns are evidence that we are a city of passionate and dedicated citizens. I accept my responsibility to support you and your administration as we move our city forward. We certainly shared a common vision of a professional and transparent government that listens to its constituents. I look forward to meeting with you so that we can heal the divides created by the competition of these past few weeks. And I wish you all the best as you take on this difficult position. Godspeed, Mayor Cunningham, Madam Clerk Janet Kil-Kelly and Treasurer Schwab.
My congratulations also, Mayor Cunningham, Madam Clerk, Treasurer Schwab. It was a long, hard journey for at least two of you. It was a long, hard fought journey for two of you. I hope, Mayor, that you bring the passion that you had in the first ward. You bring it forward here so we can all get together for the entire city. It's, it's gonna be, I know tomorrow, all three of you are gonna hit the ground running. I know that. But I would just like to see everybody get together, as you said before, unity. And I hope that we can all get together and that, myself included, will all work together to bring this city forward. The other thing I would like to, to mention is that obviously, maybe once or twice in my entire career here, I've seen the the seats of this hall filled. There are some that I've seen several times here. I would like to say that it would be nice that if some of you would come here and see exactly how the city works. It's phenomenal. I know we have several people that are consistently here that are watching us, make sure that we do our jobs. But for some of the people here that you haven't been here before, obviously, it's a historic occasion. I would like to see you come here and ask us for, ask us to do something for you like some of the speakers that come up here and speak their mind. Alright? That's all I have. Thank you.
I'd like to start out by thanking our Waukegan firefighters and the Gurnee firefighters for participating on an event, a charity event on April 22nd, the hockey game. It was a wonderful event. The minor thing is we lost, but we did a phenomenal job and it was all for Habitat for Humanity, so thank you, Waukegan Fire Department. Congratulations, Dr. Schwab, for staying on the team. Thank you for being here, we love your support. Welcome, our new city clerk, I'm looking forward to working with you. To our corporate counsel, thank you for To our corporate counsel, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Mayor Cunningham. It sounds so good. I think of Mayor Cunningham as a brother from another mother. We have become very close and I'm just so proud to watch him become the person that he is. You know, as Alderman Tempest pointed out, sometimes there's divine intervention. I believe it is the right time in his life, the right time in Waukegan for him to be here. I want to thank his daughters because you're going to sacrifice, you're going to lose part of your dad's time. And I want to thank you for that upfront. I'd also like to ask his mother to stand up. You know, this woman struggled. She was a single mom. This has to be the proudest moment in her life.
Robert Evans and Ms. Nixon are smiling at you, Sam.
Yeah, Bob is, there's no question. Bob might not be smiling, he probably knocking on that door. But hey, you know, tonight has been a very emotional night, I think, for everybody. As it was said earlier, not only by myself and others, but the council, as to what this means, not only for myself, my family, but the city of Waukegan. I don't think anyone in this room would ever believe that this day would come. It is what it is right now. Now, we need to manage to what it is. It's one thing we can do and we will do without passion or prejudice. And let's move this community to another dimension that some of us is going to be challenging for because we haven't been there before. But it's the expectation of you that are sitting in this room that will lead us to While I thank you for being here, but I'm expecting for you to continue to challenge me. Don't let me sit idle. I know some of you won't at all, but... But working with, working with the Alderman, I asked someone to put together an organizational chart of the city of Waukegan. And typically what your staff do, they put the mayor, staff, etc. I said, "No. I want you to start with the citizens of this community. Those are the shareholders. The board members of the gentlemen and ladies up here." Obviously, I am the CEO. Let's be clear. I take orders from the shareholders. That's you. You direct that to the board members and they hold me accountable because of what you want. We, when I say we, the elected officials, we have a common shareholders. That's the taxpaying residents and citizens of this community. Why do I say progress and unity? Because if we band together on moving this community forward for the common person, and that is the taxpaying resident of this community, I don't believe that we can't stop and do the things that we want to do to move this community forward. So, I expect to be challenged by Alderman. I expect for them to say no. But what I'm more, what I'm more looking for is for us to come into a room, understand that we can disagree but agree for Waukegan. And when we put Waukegan first, I don't think nothing can stop us because one thing and one thing, if Waukegan fails, we fail. If Waukegan succeed, we succeed. And that is the premise of what was bred into me by this little short man with this heart of gold. And he did it each and every day. And that was Bobby. And I can say Bob right now because I'm the mayor. But we affectionately say to Robert Evans, this man had a heartbeat that I just didn't understand until I became an Alderman. I'm going to appreciate now that I'm a mayor. But there was another little short guy from, let's be clear, they're both from the south side of Waukegan, Bob Sabanja. Yeah. And I have to say this, Bill Morse. Do you remember the wars of the Bobby, of Bill Morse and Bob Sabanja? Do you remember those wars? Well, that was the passion of Waukegan that needs to come back out. Lisa, I'm sorry, Alderman May, me and you brought that out in Waukegan. There was many people that even think to believe historically, a female, an African-American running for the chair of the mayor. That is what we should be thinking. That's the passion that we have. That's the passion that needs to come out when we're talking about developing our lakefront, bringing back our downtown, looking into our communities, making sure job opportunities, upholding to some of the immigrant issues that we have, accept the diversity that we have as opportunities. Everybody, I'm ready. I'm ready. I, I, thank you. I'm ready. And, and, and let it be, let it be what it be. Listen, right now, right now, everybody, this, I want to ask you, I mean, for three things to happen because we took pictures, our traditional pictures. Unfortunately, the senior Alderman, 40 years, Larry? How many, you got 40? 42.
Go down 42.
Go down 42.
Stay alive.
Anyway, the, the senior ranking Alderman was not here. So, what I'm going to ask is this in this order. Alderman, city clerk, treasurer, can we come back up? We're going to take a, a council picture. After that, I'm going to ask the men of Kaphal Fasai Fraternity Incorporated to please come up. We're going to take a shot together. And my daughter, where are you at? Samantha, Samantha and I will take a, a picture. And I want to do those three before we take other pictures. Is that okay?
Enjoy.
Oh, wait a minute. Is that okay, everybody? I'm not going to enjoy until I got the attention. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I did, and I must be remiss for this, everybody in the audience, everyone in the audience, there was two men who gave me opportunities for me to be in this chair today. As we all know, Bobby Evans, that was the beginning of my young life. As I became, as I became the Alderman, it was Mr. Lucius Copeland who said to me, "Sam, do you want to be Alderman?" I said, "Yes, I do. But the only reason I'm going to support you because you came back home, not just Waukegan, but back on the southeast side of town affectionately known as the south side. That's why I'm going to support you." I know what that means now. Obviously, Mr. Copeland is not here, but his beautiful wife, Mrs. Copeland, please stand. With that being said, thank you, Mrs. Copeland, as always. After Rochelle and Mrs. Copeland, I'm going to take a shot with you and you all know what that means, as a person. Motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Bill Lovell, to adjourn. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion's passed and carried. Thank you. Let's go up and take this, those photos in that order. Thank you.